All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for Temple City for October 3rd, 2023. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. And tonight, we have Pastor Kelty, who will be providing the invocation. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
It's always good to be here. Let us pray. Our divine Creator, we thank you for this world that you have created. We thank you for this beautiful day that may be a bit too warm, but provides all that we need. We thank you that we're able to live in this community in order to enjoy the benefits for all that is to offer us. It's for this reason that we would come into your presence this evening. To ask your blessing upon all here gathered, that we are about to do this evening. May this city council and their staff have your wisdom to be with them as they seek to do those things that make this an even better community. We know not what the future may bring, but Lord, we know that as we seek to do our best to this city and the community around us, that you will be with us, not for just this day, for all time, and for this, we are truly thankful. May we, dear Lord, always look to thee for guidance in all we do, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Councilmember Yu will lead us in the pledge.
All right, so put your right hand over your heart, ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, we do not have any ceremonial matters. Do we have any public comments? All right, seeing none, we close public comments. Next, we have a consent calendar, which can be approved in a single motion unless anyone wishes to pull an item.
Mayor Mann, staff would like to pull item, excuse me, B from the consent calendar agenda for some clarification from our city clerk.
Okay, understood. So consent calendar item B will be pulled. May we have a motion for the remaining items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the remaining items in a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist? Yes? Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. All right, next, we move on.
Should we go back to D?
Oh, yes, we go back to 7B for the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This item is pulled so that staff can make an amendment to resolution number 235705 pertaining to establishing regulations for the candidate's statement. Staff received a call from the county registrar, county clerk's office yesterday informing that for the 2024 election, they're offering candidate the option to post their candidate's statements online on the county's website if they should choose not to have their candidate's statement printed on the voter information pamphlet. There are no other material change, the remainder of the resolution. Staff is requesting that city council adopt resolution number 235703 and 235704 as presented and to adopt resolution number 235705 as amended, adding the option for candidates to be able to post their candidate's statement online should they choose not to have it printed in the voter pamphlet.
Peggy?
Yes?
Ask a question. So if you choose to put it online and not in the booklet, is there still a fee or is there a county website that will list them all?
The fee is about $280. That's just round it up. I think it's $279.60. And it's going to be somewhere on, they're working on placing it somewhere like a blurb on the county's website to let voters know that there's not a printed candidate's statement that they could go to the county's website to view the candidate's statement.
But you do pay for it if it's on the county's website?
It's on the county's website, but it's not going to be printed on the voter's pamphlet.
How do you pay for it?
Is there still a choice to print?
You can choose to print. If you choose to pay to print, then your statement would be in the voter pamphlet and also on the website. But you could, or you could choose to just have it online and it's just going to be available on the county's website.
So it's either/or?
Correct.
You can't have both?
Well, you don't need to because then if you choose to print, it's also going to be made available online.
Oh, I see, I see. So by choosing to print, you get both.
You could print, have it on the voter's pamphlet. It's also posted on the county's website. Or you could just have it online on the county's website, or you could choose not to have a candidate's statement.
And that online version, I'm assuming, will not be on the city website, correct?
The election is going to be managed and run by the county.
So if you choose to print, you still pay?
Yes. There's a fee to either, there's a fee to either option.
I believe you pay a lot more, right? So another follow-up question. If you choose to have just online on the county website, would the booklet put a reference there or?
County's working on putting some kind of verbiage on the voter pamphlet so that voters know where to locate those posted online candidate's statement. But I think it's just going to be a very, very simple look online or something like that, candidate's statement available online.
They won't like, under your name or anything else, right?
They have not given me the specifics of what it's going to look like. They're still working on it.
Okay, okay. I was wondering if you, for Vincent, you see such and such. No, there's, okay.
So it's more default?
And another question is, I know there's language translation requirements. That applies to online as well, right?
County will post all the statements online in all the required languages.
Okay.
And that's to translate it? They're going to do that for us?
Yes.
At no additional cost?
There is cost.
Of course. So that's separate from the $280?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll just wait for all that information?
So $280 is in English only?
Well, county's accounting relating to translation is not very clear. There's no clear separation at this point. I think it's going to be something that the city will have to pick up because county has to provide the candidate's statement in the 18 to 21 languages that they're required to provide election material. So I think that's shared between all cities that's conducting an election consolidated with the county.
I take it then you may not even have a chance to review your statement, translate the statement.
If it's going to be printed, county will provide a proof for the clerks to look over in English and in Spanish, but we do not view the other translated statements. Because we don't know which language the voters are going to request, there's the statement.
I thought in Temple City, the three require is English, Chinese, and Spanish?
When the election is consolidated with the county, they go by their language requirements. So they have to provide the languages actually.
Which Chinese would you do?
Actually, Chinese language is the same. It's just that.
Is it Cantonese?
The printed, you have the choice of simplified words or not simplified, but the words are the same, but not everybody can read both.
There's 20 languages that the county would have to provide election material in if you requested?
That's true, that's true, yeah. You have a choice.
So we'll get more information, you'll share more information with us as they share with you. Okay.
William?
Yes.
You know, I'm sorry, I wanted to pull item, I think it's 7C.
Well, we've already made a motion for it, so can we still discuss the item, Mr.?
You could discuss it. Let's finish with B and actually have those approved. You could discuss it. Probably the best time would be at the time for council items separate from the agenda because we have already, you have already actually voted on it, so we'll, we can get to the time for.
So there's no way you can amend a vote once the consent calendar has been approved?
You could ask for reconsideration of the item and would need to get a second to reconsider it. And if you made the motion to reconsider and had a second, then the matter would be back open and that would be.
We still need to vote on it, right? If they move to reconsider?
If they do move to reconsider, be moved second and vote on it.
And then vote on it to reconsider.
Yes, and then you'd have your discussion and then you'd vote on the matter again.
Well, let's follow the suggestion of maybe finishing 7B first so we don't conflate the two. So are there any other questions on 7B for Ms. Quo?
No, I guess more to come.
Yeah. If not, I think we do need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Can we have, can we have a, take a hearing on this or something? I thought I saw in the notes that we have to open public comment. Open public comment and.
Oh, yes, you are correct. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, so we will open the public comment on item 7B. Is there anyone who would wish to speak on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Unless there's final council questions or comments, may we have a motion for?
Just want to clarify your question. So the, in the motion, none of the resolutions are impacted, right?
Yes, the number, 235705 has to be.
It's amended.
As amended.
Correct.
Oh, as amended, okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
We'd make a motion that we adopt resolution number 235703, calling the general municipal election for March 5th, 2024, and that we adopt resolution 235704, requesting the Board of Supervisor of the County of Los Angeles to consolidate city's general municipal election to be held on the same date with the statewide general election. And lastly, adopt resolution number 235705, establishing regulations for candidates pertaining to candidate's statements submitted to the voters, an election to be held on March 5th, 2024, as amended.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Unless there's any objections, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. So 7B has been approved. And Councilmember Sternquist, do you wish to make a motion?
You know, I apologize for not calling Brian earlier and answering that question, but I think it's an important consideration just for the council to think about. And I don't know, I must have missed, I saw the general summation of what the total was, but I just had a concern. So can we, can I ask, what was it to ask for?
Make a motion.
Move to reconsider item, item C.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Okay, motion in a second and we need to vote on that? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. So we have 7C back on and Councilmember Sternquist?
Thank you, Greg, for giving us that information. You know, I don't know how I missed item C, but I just had a concern between the steps, not what the salary in itself was, but I was thinking if, you know, I think if step one, Brian, you have that up in front of you, was $38,000 for the lowest level position that we're implementing?
For the Parks Tree Assistant Worker.
Assistant Worker.
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe the second step, is that after one year?
Generally, yes, it is. We do have some level of discretion in terms of getting past a probationary period, but generally speaking, the second step is after a first year, but we do have some discretion and in the hiring process as well. We can go up steps depending on the person's qualification as well.
Okay, well, I was just thinking that even at the lowest step, say they met the minimum, because it is a tough time to get people to come to work for municipalities. Even at the lowest step, I thought, I think after one year, when the next step two was, there was only a difference of how much? Was it $900 or if that much?
About $900, yeah.
About $900. And I thought, it just seemed like if you've been here a year and you've done a really great job, that second step, just to have a retention, might be a little bit higher. I would hate for someone to come in, start at that lower end salary, get a year's experience, and then off they go to someplace else. But that's the lowest jump, isn't it, between in dollar amount, between the second and the other position?
You wouldn't have to negotiate that?
I'm sorry? No, not negotiate. I was just saying that I think that's a low for the second step. You guys might not, I just do think it is.
Sorry, Councilmember Sternquist, I'm taking a look.
I think the other steps had a much.
Proportionally, they still should be the same exact percentage, yes.
Okay.
It is one of our, it is one of our lower paying positions overall, citywide, but yet proportionally, those percentages are the same percentages, step one through step seven.
But it's a significant difference because of the total amount, right?
It is one of our lower paying positions in the city.
No, I mean between the highest one we're approving tonight.
Yes, there is, yeah, because that is a supervisor.
Because it's a higher.
It's a supervisor position. Remember, we had, we had gone down from the manager level position to the supervisor position, so that's.
Okay, well, it was just a thought, I mean, I.
Sure, are we just talking about one position or all of them?
Yeah, I think because it was significantly lower.
So what position are we talking about?
It's called the.
I think Councilmember Sternquist is talking about the Parks and Trees Assistant Worker position. And we're looking for that to be.
So it's a trainee position, basically?
You could describe it as that it's more of a journeyman position in terms of the sense that we're just looking for someone to do some flexible, lower level work in terms of park maintenance and other things as well, so that provides some flexibility between some assistance for our urban forest division and our park maintenance division.
Do you think that position is going to be easy to fill?
We will find out how difficult it is.
I believe this was initially proposed by the city manager as an apprentice or temporary worker position?
We had titled it, we had titled it as apprentice before, and then just from a job description standpoint, they, with the human resources, and Susan had re-titled it as a Parks and Trees Assistant Worker, that was more of a comparable type of job classification that we could compare, and it was comparable to other agencies around.
So maybe it's the title that was stumping me up, Vincent, instead of apprentice or?
Yeah, I think last time we talked about it, apprentice, one, at least my concern was that apprentice came and then there was no position to get promoted to, right? Whereas this actually will allow you six or seven year in every step you go up.
Thank you for.
Provide certain stability and incentive to work for us.
And thank you, Councilmember Yu. That was one of, as Councilmember Yu had pointed out during our budget discussion, that was one of the concerns as well. And so titling something and then structuring it from a classification standpoint, again, it is one of our lower paying positions in the city, but it was, it was to address the concern that we would just not be hiring someone for a year, it's apprentice, and then you're out the door. Or there's an expectation that the apprentice position becomes another type of position later.
What are the qualifications for this position?
The qualifications generally are, I'd have to look at the job description.
High school education?
High school education.
No college?
No, no college for this type of position. So we're looking for people who are in the maintenance field, you know, either working for private contractors or others, maybe hopefully some of public agency, but not necessarily.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other council questions or comments, may we have a motion for 7C?
Make a motion to approve item 7C.
Second.
Motion in a second, unless, if there's no objections, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, public hearing, we have none, unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have none. We move to update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council. Just want to thank staff for a great, great work and our partner, the Temple City Unified School District, as well for our Fall Festival, car show, and centennial celebration as well. I really appreciate all of their hard work this past weekend. That's it for me tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have an update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I reported last time, I attended the League of California Cities' annual conference and convention in Sacramento two weeks ago now, and learned quite a bit about new developments in law, impacting cities. So I'll be rolling some things out over your next few meetings. Important for tonight are actually just three cases that are ongoing. The first, you may have heard that the California Business Roundtable has put an initiative on the ballot that would substantially change certain aspects of the legislative process for the state, but would also really hamper local government entities' ability to increase fees and to set taxes.
What is the California Business Roundtable? Is it an entity or is it?
It's a group of businesses, not really sure exactly what they are.
All right, so it's just some entity decided to call themselves a?
Right. It's much like, much like the Howard Jarvis.
Are they lobbyists?
I would say much like the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association is sort of an undefined group that brings a lot of lawsuits about taxes. This seems to be a business-friendly or a business-focused group that is bringing an initiative related to taxes.
Never heard of them.
I hadn't either until they put this on the ballot. In any event, the state government has filed a lawsuit directly with the California Supreme Court alleging that the initiative would revise our state constitution as opposed to amending it because it, instead of adding something new, it makes substantive changes to what's already there. And in light of that, it has to go through a different process than an initiative with a 50% plus one approval. The League of California Cities, the Association of California Counties, and other groups, special district groups have all joined that, and that matter will be heard. The first hearings will be this fall, we'll get a briefing schedule, and the matter can be decided anytime before next June, when the ballot for November would have to be printed. So that's number one. Number two, and you probably have seen this in the local newspapers or on television, the city of Whittier and a coalition of 12 other cities is challenging the County of Los Angeles Superior Court's zero bail policy. Zero bail went into effect on Sunday. The challenge has been filed. If they are successful, it would knock out the policy countywide. So obviously, it's something that all of our cities and all really people within the county are watching carefully.
I saw that they filed a lawsuit, but I didn't ever see anything in anything I read or heard. Are they seeking injunctive relief at this time?
I believe they will be seeking a preliminary injunction. They did not seek, or at least if they sought, it was quickly dismissed, TRO, Temporary Restraining Order. And I don't think that would have had a great chance of succeeding, but I certainly they would, I believe they're seeking a preliminary injunction.
We weren't signatories.
We were not, and I'd be happy to discuss that with you after the meeting and kind of, some different thoughts about that.
Greg, how many? What city, Whittier?
The city of Whittier, and the law firm is Jones &amp; Mayer, out of, I believe, North Orange County. They have several cities in the southeast Los Angeles County area.
I was surprised to see San Marino sign on.
And Arcadia.
Oh, Arcadia, awesome.
It's an interesting array of cities. You wouldn't think of those cities all in the same loop together.
Well, there were two large groups, one of which said that it was ineffective, and another large group which said it was effective. So nobody knows.
And we'll see what the court says. The final one for tonight, and this is actually one that I'm going to study a bit more and I'd like to bring back either in two weeks or in four weeks, case is often known as Grants Pass, and it's a case regarding restrictions on camping ordinances, on homeless activities, and what the sort of, the balance of the rights of the city versus the rights of the individual. As you will remember, the notable case out of the city of Boise said that if a person is involuntarily homeless, which means that that person has no options, there are no shelter beds available, then their activity of simply being homeless cannot be criminalized. In the Grants Pass case, the court allowed there to be a, essentially a class, it was viewed as a class action, that the whole class could bring the suit. And that has caused a wide array of people, including the League of California Cities and including our governor, a strong push from the city of San Francisco to say that Boise itself required an individualized determination as to the person experiencing homelessness. Has that person been offered services? Is there a bed available for that person? Are they resisting? Are they unwilling to go? And in that consec, or in that circumstance, then action could be taken by the city. But if nothing were available, then no action could be taken.
Is Grants Pass, is that a federal case or?
It is a federal case. And it's heading.
How the heck does Idaho have anything to do with California?
Right, it's so.
So it must be a federal case.
It's, the original is Boise and now Grants Pass, I believe is, might even be Oregon. But the case is going to the US Supreme, or the case has been, review has been sought by the US Supreme Court because the Ninth Circuit has actually a mix of opinions in it, saying different things in terms of what is, what enforcement is allowable, what enforcement isn't, what level of resistance from individuals experiencing homelessness gives rise to the ability to enforce. Is someone, for lack of a better term, truly involuntarily homeless, or are they experiencing different parts of their journey in life such that it's not, it's more of a voluntary situation under the law? So the cities, the counties have asked the US Supreme Court to weigh in and to give some final answers. We'll find out this fall if the court takes it, but the league has jumped in on that. And as I say, as the case goes along, I'll be able to frame for you a little bit better. First of all, what the current rules actually are as they're being briefed by the parties, because that's been hard to figure out. What are the rules? What are, what, what as a city are we allowed to enforce? Where are we not? But as we look at what the enforcement rights actually are, what the rights of the individuals are, how we balance those today, we can also start looking at what are the parties contending and where the court might go. So it's one we're going to follow very closely. And as I say, after I'm able to read some pretty thick briefs, I'll be able to give you a little bit more.
And what is the league's position on this? So you would rather keep this at a local level?
Yes.
Rather than getting the federal government involved?
Right. Well, the league's initial position is that Boise itself is a perfectly understandable case, where if someone is involuntarily homeless, then you should not be criminalizing the conduct of simply being homeless. But some of the specifics in some of the district court cases and some of the state cases applying Boise, as I've said, are all over the map. So what actually constitutes voluntary versus involuntary? Can you continue to regulate conduct versus sleeping? So if someone is lighting a fire in the park to stay warm, that might be something where, use Boise, might have to allow that for warmth unless they're willing to provide blankets. In Temple City, in the middle of the summer, lighting a fire in a park would not be, would not have the same reasonableness factor. So what they're looking for right now, the league and the governor and others, is for the Supreme Court to weigh in and kind of give us, give us the guideposts that the appellate courts, the trial courts can start following instead of them each going their own way. And as I say, we'll look, read up on that better and give you quite a bit more as the autumn goes along and we see whether the court takes the case.
And can you also help us understand that case in relation to cities in California that have a smorgasbord of ordinances related to?
Yes.
Encapments and, because it, I mean, for me personally, it's hard. encampments and, because it, I mean, it, for me personally, it's hard to follow or understand because every ordinance is crafted differently, and I don't know the, you're here to advise us on the legality of that.
Yeah.
So, like, the one that jumps out at me is, I think San Diego always makes the news about clearing encampments and, you know, get, advocates would, would get, you know, in, in their face about it, saying, oh, that's unconstitutional, et cetera, et cetera. So, but then every ordinance is written differently, right? Some of them are, would say specifically, you can't be near schools, parks, public spaces, or the one I, I, I find interesting is, I think, for which city it was, they, they use the term critical infrastructure. If you're near, you cannot be in or within critical infrastructure, whatever that means.
Right.
Um, and then another, I can't remember which city, then had like, they were trying to do like a blanket ordinance, and so there was a lot of question marks about that. They weren't pinpointing specific areas. They were just saying citywide or something like that. So, I, I know it's a federal case, and it's probably going to take a while, but, you know, this is a, has been an ongoing issue for quite some time.
It's something that's important, and so I don't want to give you sort of an offhand take on it. I want to really be able to read it and give you the best advice I can give you, and, and as we're moving along through it.
So, we, we've commonly stated, and I know this issue has come up, that people are always saying, well, it's not against the law to be homeless. So, would it be fair to say that proponents of this want to make it against the law to be homeless under certain circumstances?
I, I think, I think the fair way to say it is, um, again, the, the law is very confused, but most of the proponents, I won't speak for all, but most, including the League of Cities, would say that if someone is truly involuntarily homeless, if there are not places to go, if the person has not been offered services because there are no services to give them, then they would not want to see that, that person's life criminalized.
Who's criminalizing it right now?
By saying that they're violating an ordinance.
So, there are, so, so basically, there are ordinances out there somewhere that are saying that, and somehow the federal government or US Supreme Court is going to rule on those ordinances?
They're going to rule on, we believe, and again, we're going to read everything, on under what circumstances you can enforce an anti-camping ordinance and other behavior-based ordinances against persons who are currently homeless.
Like loitering?
Loitering. Um, I, I'll give you an example. There, there have been ordinances against, for example, sleeping in a park for more than an hour because there were cities that thought that napping in a park, if you were a person who falls asleep in the sun, was fine, but they wanted to not allow homeless persons to sleep for periods of time in the park. They said, well, that, that's not necessarily defensible. That looks like it's targeting those people for being homeless. Compare that with a, an historic park that is opened every morning at seven AM and is, has its gates locked at 6:00 PM, and no one can be in the park overnight. That's been upheld as a valid restriction, even if someone wants to sleep in the park because that park is closed to all people at night, and there are reasons for it that go well beyond homelessness. And in that case, that city also had other areas where people were not barred from sleeping overnight. So, again, we'll, we'll work through it all. It's, it's, as you've said, Mr. Mayor, it's a mess. It's hard to figure out what the rules actually are. And so, truly, the Grants Pass case is about asking the US Supreme Court to give some rules that then the other courts will have to follow, so we don't keep getting that kind of mix of advice and trying to figure out on our own where to go, where will, where would we be safe, where would we be subject to, to lawsuit? So, we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll keep, keep briefing you over time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next, we go to council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? All right. Since we have none, we move on to council items separate from the regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist.
This one, we can say anything?
Hi.
Um, Greg, have you heard about this new care court that Governor Newsom is trying to put into place in this, in the state?
I've heard very little about it, but I, I do know that it exists, yes.
I was wondering if you could just brief the council on it. I've heard little bits and pieces and heard recently at the cog. It seemed another type of complicated thing that, that's being implemented across the state in cities, which deals with homeless people, especially those who are schizophrenic, and giving them an alternative if they get arrested or they do something criminal, to voluntarily go to this care court where they have a magistrate.
What is it again?
It's called Care Court.
Called the Community Assistance, Recovery, and Empowerment Court.
Yes. So, if you-
Happy to go through the whole thing and summarize it for you as best I can. Happy to do that.
Thank you. It was, seemed very complicated.
Kind of just, they're trying to decriminalize those who have mental illnesses, and rather than having them go through the criminal court system, get them the help that perhaps they need. So, it's another, I guess you could say, option that would be available.
But it's only voluntary, that you, the way you can go.
Well, under current law, the way I understand it, that most of these laws, the way they are, it is voluntary, and that, that's the problem. If they don't want to do it, then they don't have to do it.
Is it only for, for schizophrenics?
I, I don't know what the, the broadness of it is.
At the cog meeting, they continually referred to schizophrenics, and that, that seemed to be the category. But the girl was on Zoom, and she was going in and out because of technical problems, but it was really interesting, and I thought I'd, it would be something we might want to know more about.
And they're also tying it into perhaps a solution to homelessness as well, so we'll see.
Anything else?
That's all. Thank you. Oh, just want to congratulate everyone on the event at the park, the Centennial. It was wonderful. I, I mean, it was just beyond my expectations, and other than the rain, I think it was just a beautiful day. So, thank you to everyone who had any involvement and for all the people who came out to celebrate.
Councilmember Viscara?
I can only echo what Councilmember Sternquist said. It's, I thought it was great, and I, and I thought it went over well. I, I think Adam did a hell of a job. So, my congratulations to him, and I already told Brian that I thought he did a hell of a job. So, job well done. Oh, and you guys did too.
And can I say I was very impressed by the fact of how well-prepared you were for your portion of the welcome?
Why, thank you.
I was proud of you. I thought you did a great job.
Did you like the irradiated corn?
You did a great job, yes.
Anything else, Councilmember? All right, thank you. Councilmember, you?
I echo the sentiment, but I just couldn't say enough about how staff, our city manager and everybody on down, and our sheriff department and everybody, you know, just did a great job on that day. Got a lot of compliments from everyone. So, and we lucked out with it, with the, with the, with the rain, and I was so, so happy that we got through that. But just a great job overall. I was very pleased.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would echo my fellow council members. A couple of critiques, though, and I don't mean to be negative, but I thought the car show was kind of an afterthought a little bit. I kind of felt bad because usually that's a big part of that fall festival, and I was hoping Adam would be here tonight, but I'm sure there were logistics to work out. It seemed like there were so many things going on at one time that maybe a couple of things just didn't live up to past billions, I guess. And I thought that was one of them, and I don't know, maybe it was the weather as well. It just didn't seem to have that same vibe that it had in the past. And then, second of all, I thought we kind of wasted the expertise of Paul Spitzeri.
Of what?
Paul Spitzeri, who was the, who was the expert on this, on this whole story, and he, he's actually the curator of the museum, the Homestead Museum. Very knowledgeable, and I don't know if all of you guys know who he is. He was in, in here, actually, giving his little talk about the history of, of the city of Temple and, and, and just the area in general, all the family. I mean, the guy is amazing. He had no notes. He was just talking from his, from his head. I mean, he just, very impressive. I thought it was unfortunately not, not as well-tended as I had hoped, and maybe because it was over here, it was kind of out of the beaten path. Um, I already talked to Brian about this, and, you know, maybe in hindsight, it would have been better to have him either out in the park somewhere where people had more access to him and maybe could ask even questions. And also, there, there was really nothing out there that said, hey, go listen to Paul in the council chambers. There were a couple of people here. I know Peggy was here for most of it. I came in for a little bit. Uh, but it really wasn't a highlighted thing, and I thought, I felt bad for Paul because he was basically talking to an empty room in here.
Oh.
But I do know that it was, I believe Brian said it was taped, so it will be available, and, and that's why I thought I'd get that word out that it's going to be on the website, I guess, or people would be accessing it through the website. I would, I would certainly recommend that whoever, if you did not get a chance to listen to him, that you go online and listen to him because he has a lot of great information, very knowledgeable, very personal man, and it was a good, good thing. But, you know, that aside, I thought it went well. You know, the rain, we got lucky. It rained pretty hard here, though, for a little while. But for the most part, I think everybody, how long did everybody stay? They pretty much stayed till five, six o'clock, maybe?
About, once rain had about one, everybody dispersed, and there was a little bit of a comeback, but it was pretty much done once the heavy rain-
Now, is that the last kind of celebration we're going to have? Is that, I mean, are we going to, is there anything else?
In terms of the large celebration, yeah, that was kind of our large celebration for the year.
Because I know, I know we initially talked about it being a one-year kind of celebration, and I don't know when that one year ends. Do, do we know, or when do we start and when do we end?
It, it's kind of open-ended. I think the-
When was the actual hundred year? Does anybody remember when it was actually, what is that date? I think it was in May?
Yes.
Yeah, May was the, I guess it depends on your reference point. My understanding is May was when the actual company documents were signed.
I, I don't know. I'm sure somebody, maybe we should call Paul and let him ask him, but-
Yeah, because, because the one-year anniversary that was actually celebrated was, was September, end of September in nineteen twenty-four. So, even back then, they, they took liberties with determining when to celebrate the one-year anniversary.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there's anything else that's going to occur.
We'll, we'll, we'll come back to the ad hoc as well.
I mean, not, not, not on the scale.
No, we, we won't be, on the scale of what we did this past Saturday ago, but what other stuff we'll be doing throughout the year, for sure.
Well, maybe that's something we can discuss for the, through the ad hoc.
Yeah, we could.
Or the standing, because that's still in effect. We, we still have that.
I, I would, I would suggest maybe-
Maybe a wrap-up meeting to see what we did right, what we didn't do right, and what we maybe can do moving forward.
Because I, I would like, if, if we were to do anything else, that some of those ideas start with staff to see if there's other areas that perhaps weren't explored, but we can integrate somehow over the next six months or so. Because again, we also have competing other things as well with the holidays coming up, and then we have the Halloween carnival.
You know, and this was a big production. It wasn't a small thing. There, there were a lot of moving parts.
Although a lot of them were not just the city, though. It was the school district and historical society. So, that, just to coordinate all that, I think was, was a good, good job for staff. I know that, you know, they, they sure, they definitely tried hard. There's no question about that. So, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank, yeah, thank you. And, and yes, I, I certainly was, yeah, I'm very proud of everyone who made it happen, starting, starting with our, our staff, our team. Can't say enough about Director Matsumoto and his efforts, especially not just working with the ad hoc, but I know they had to coordinate a lot with the school district side or a lot of logistics. So, also shout out again to the, the school district for, for also being there. And of course, the students, you know, all the student performances were, are always the center of attention, and they certainly didn't disappoint. Uh, and I'm also glad the Royal Court got their parade. So, that, that was good to, to see them out there.
Where were they? I didn't, I didn't see them.
They were behind.
They were in the middle part of the parade.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, um, so, yeah, we, we got lucky with the weather despite the heavy rain kind of maybe shutting down just a couple hours later. I, I, I will say the, some of the feedback I got from families with, with younger kids and even just from, from my, my own kids, they, they loved the, the ball pits, the obstacle courses, the arts.
The climbing wall?
Yeah, the, well, they didn't go on the rock climbing wall, but I, I saw kids who were there. So, that, that was a hit. I, I think that the feedback was they, some, when they heard that it was a, a festival or carnival, they were expecting something very similar to the Camellia Festival, and it, it wasn't. And, and I, I mean that in a, in a good way because it's just something we haven't really done.
You mean like rides and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, they were thinking, kind of like similar to what to expect from there. So, I, I thought it was, it was nice, and it was a brilliant move from staff to kind of think outside of maybe what we've traditionally done for so many years. So, so that was, that was definitely hit. I know my sons got lost in that jumper ball pit. There was like a bunch of kids in there. Um, so that, that, that was great. Just also want to thank our, our dignitaries, especially Assembly Member Mike Fong and Supervisor Catherine Barker for, for being there. They're great supporters. And of course, I know Congress Member Judy Chu was planned to show up, but of course, due to the events in DC, she, she was not able to be there personally. So, um, so, yeah, and, and also the Historical Society for really kicking it off for us. I, I know, kind of mentioned it during, during the opening ceremony, but, um, again, I learned everything about the history through them, not just going to the museum, but talking to the board, like Donna, Don Terran, and Bob Westgate, et cetera. And, and all the posts that they put out with the historical photos, if, if you don't really follow them on social media or their website, they crank out at a pretty regular pace these really interesting photos from the early days. Is, is it daily? Well, it's pretty frequent. It's pretty frequent, and, yeah, I, I learned a lot of, a lot of stuff from, from them. And, and I want to echo Mayor Protem's comment about Paul Spitzeri. I, I, although I didn't hear him speak in person, there was one video that I think Jerry took, and it wa, he gave a talk at the Women's Club or the Historical Society-
Women's Club, I think.
Women's Club about the early founding years, because that was kind of like his way of kicking off the, he knew the one year, one hundred year anniversary was coming up. And that was a phenomenal presentation. It was just, he had great graphics, and he's a very engaging speaker. So, I think it was like almost an hour, but it just didn't feel like an hour.
And it was interesting about the sessions that he was doing. He was breaking it up into segments. So, what was it, Peggy? There was four different segments, I think, he did altogether, and, and each one was different. So, it wasn't, you know, you didn't have to stay here for the whole time necessarily, but, yeah, it was, it was good. He did a good job.
Yeah, so I, I just want to say that, that was a great, great way to kind of end with a, end with a bang despite the rain. So, so thank, I want to thank everyone for being a part of that.
And there were two, I don't know, two relatives here, but they weren't relatives of Temple, were they? Do you remember who they were related to? Yeah. Yeah, it was, wasn't, wasn't the Temple family they were related to.
Roland?
Rollins, yeah. Because you remember, because it's interesting to hear one thing about Paul. When he talks about these things, it's all this, all these people, we know now why we have the street names. Roland, Workman, Baldwin. You know, those are all individuals that ended up with streets named after them.
Woodruff?
Viscara? No, just kidding. Oh. What is the other one? Woodruff?
Yeah.
Is, is there Woodruff?
I think so.
Does anyone recall when the Camellia became our flower, our city flower? In the sixties?
It wasn't that recent. Yeah, it wasn't that long ago. Did y'all mean Gary Temple that day?
No, who's Gary Temple? No, who's Gary Temple?
He claimed to be.
You sure it wasn't Steve, our friend?
He was at the Historic Society booth.
Really?
Oh, no, I didn't get it.
I didn't know that. I thought we were trying to reach out to somebody in the Temple family, but I was told they weren't able to hook up with anybody.
No, he claimed he was the grandson.
Well, claiming he was. Do you know anything about that, Brian?
The Hunkin' Calrue and, that was all, that's my grandfather. It was quite a big.
All right. One last thing, I just want to confirm with our city manager.
Yes, sir.
Our next meeting is actually a special meeting to discuss.
Las Tunas.
Las Tunas, is that correct? And that's October 12th.
October 12th, next Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Okay, just so anyone who's tuning in, if you're interested in that, since it's a special meeting, it doesn't align with our regular schedule. And with that, we move on to the last part, additional public comments. From anyone?
You know, I have just one little thing.
Sure, sure.
Vince and I got a, was it a text? Anyway. Yeah, a message showing progress on the mosaic for the park, Primrose.
The Primrose Muro?
Did you guys get it?
Yes.
Or you all got it? I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Actually, speaking of that, do we know approximately when it'll be finalized?
There's still, there's still some work that the artist is doing, but we're looking sometime in mid-November is for that to be finalized. And we would, we would work with your schedules to do a, like a unveiling. And we'd want to do some planting as well. As part of our state grant, we need to do a little bit of an unveiling plus some planting. So, but once the artist kind of gives us the final, final go-ahead on that date, we will solidify that and confirm that with your schedules.
All right. All right. If there's no additional public comments, I will close public comments and we are adjourned. Good night.